All right. I call the 373rd meeting of the College Place Planning Commission to order. Mr. Ricker, will you please do the roll call?
Monta Poynter.
Here.
Scott Duncan.
Here.
Randall Braden Smith.
Here.
Eileen Davis.
Here.
Ken Lutterback.
Here.
Dan Olson.
Here.
Brian Ma.
Here.
Lea O'Korn. Everyone's here.
Thank you, sir. All right, a couple items on the consent agenda. The first item being to approve the planning commission meeting minutes from our last meeting on August 15, 2017. Do I have a motion for approval of those minutes, please?
Someone?
It's moved by Commissioner Olson and seconded by Commissioner Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed? It's carried 7-0. And now we will approve the agenda for tonight's meeting September 19. Is there any additions or modifications? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of our agenda tonight? Moved by Commissioner Brennis.
Let me see.
Seconded by Commissioner Ma. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it carries 6-0. All right. Our agenda, so, Mr. Ricker, will you please?
We have our city attorney here tonight, Andrea Claire. She's going to talk to us about the implications of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, which is a Supreme Court decision. That's it. The packet, I didn't provide any background information. There was some information that was emailed out to you guys, I think, a week ago or two weeks ago, that had some links for you guys to take a look at various different codes and their attempts to address the Supreme Court's decision. And, so, Andrea, do you want to?
Sure. Sure. Thank you. My name's Andrea Claire. I'm the College Place City Attorney, and I had an opportunity to take a look at this case. It's actually not so new, having come down in 2015. But as we were attempting to prepare a draft sign code and have it passed, this came up on our radar, and we probably have some items within the draft code that we need to take a look at and revise before it ultimately gets passed. But I wanted to take a moment and just to appraise you all of what the Supreme Court did. And it's my wheelhouse, so, you know, I'm probably going to give you a little too much detail about the court process, but I think it's informative. So, in Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, a pastor had, didn't have funds, didn't have a very large church, and was attempting to place signs out periodically around the town of Gilbert, Arizona, to notify residents of where he was going to be having church. They didn't have enough funds for a building, and so the location would change. And so, throughout the week, he would put out signs advertising where that meeting was going to take place and the time. And the code enforcement officer found that it violated their code because it was supposed to be taken down about an hour after the event. And they, the church largely, didn't get to those signs and removing them until midday Sunday. So, it was past the one hour. And so, the court enforcement took a position that it was in violation of their code and confiscated some of those signs. And slowly but surely, it found its way into the United States District Court. And they were supported by other organizations. They moved the court for an injunction of this ordinance barring the enforcement of it, and the court struck it down and said, "No, it was fine." It then found its way up to the Court of Appeals. They affirmed it based on a split in the circuits. About half of the circuits found that the law was content neutral, and half found that it wasn't. It ended up getting remanded and found its way back up through the chain and ultimately in the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court sided with, obviously, the other half, disagreed with the Ninth Circuit, and found that the law on its face was discriminatory. It regulated content. And to make it kind of short, they found that the code required about, you know, that you needed a permit, but for 23 different categories, it found that you didn't need a permit. There was all these exceptions, and three of those exceptions were a problem. One of them was a temporary directional sign. And they found that if that conveyed a message directing the public to a church or some other qualifying event, that was a temporary directional sign, and it would be more restricted based on the time that it was allowed to be out and how big it was. Another exception was for political signs. And of course, the definition of a political sign was if it was designed to influence the outcome of an election. And that, you could be a little bit larger, and it had a little bit more timeframe, but after the election, it would have to be taken down. And then finally, the ideological signs were, if it communicated a certain message or an idea, and those had restrictions on it. And they used those three categories and found that those were content-based. And they basically said, "If you have to read the sign and interpret the message in order to describe which category it's in," well, obviously, then that's not content neutral. You're regulating the message and violating free speech if you have to read it to interpret it first and to fit into those three categories. So, they struck it down and ultimately decided that, and they went through this analysis, which probably doesn't make much of a difference, but if it's regulating the content, then it's going to be subject to strict scrutiny. And ultimately, you know, the government's reasoning or justification behind it didn't meet the strict scrutiny because it's discriminatory. So, the first step of the analysis is to determine whether or not it's content neutral or if it's regulating the content. Of course, if you have to read the sign in order to interpret whether or not it's, what the sign is and what level it falls into. And of course, in this case, with the pastor's signs, it was the most restrictive based on his message, which was to advertise to like-minded individuals to go to their meeting. The government's justification was, "Well, it's aesthetic, it's a public safety concern." But the court said that there's no difference between him advertising for his church or politics, advertising for their politics versus, you know, a business advertising. So, we can't regulate the content. You need to treat all, basically, signs similarly. If that's the justification, public safety or aesthetics, then you should treat them all the same. So, you can regulate the time that they're out, but it should be general or apply evenly to all the signs, not based just on content. We're not going to differentiate based on content. Materials, you can regulate, so the manner, the place, and the time are okay to regulate, but do not regulate the content. So, that's essentially what we're going to be looking at as we look at our draft code. And I think in our draft, we were looking at political signs and calling those out and putting restrictions on them. So, we just need to be careful and mindful of doing that. So, we're going to be regulating the time, place, manner consistently across the board, regardless of the message, if that makes any sense. So, we're going to take a look at that. It's obviously okay for municipalities to regulate signs. There is important government reasons to regulate them. We just need to be careful we're not calling out politicals or, you know, for instance, like in this case where the pastor was just trying to advertise his meeting place because you kind of, you cross that bridge in getting into, you know, the speaker or the message as opposed to, you know, the purpose behind the sign. So, the court found that even though it didn't appear to regulate the content, in its purpose, it ultimately did because it found that the message was being regulated by the event that the pastor was choosing to advertise. So, we're going to be mindful of that, and we're going to take a look at that. Other municipalities have redone their codes and also put in, you know, kind of qualifiers or, you know, just kind of a blanket, "This code isn't intended to discriminate or disqualify in any way. If it does and it gets struck down, then the rest of it will be valid" type thing. So, we want to make sure that our code is consistent with the new laws. It's changed since it kind of flipped everything upside down in terms of how municipalities approached it and looked at it before. So, we'll be more general in making sure it's across the board, applying evenly without regulating that content. So, and it's been a few years, and other cities have done it. It hasn't found its way yet, but we're, I think we're kind of understanding more and more about what that looks like and how to go about doing that with some other models out there.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I know the link wasn't working, so you haven't been able to dive into our draft as much as you probably would have liked to before tonight, but we are attempting to regulate temporary signage. And that, one of those categories is political signs. But also, we have real estate signs and then...
Garage sales.
Garage sales, those sort of things.
Right.
And I think the way we're regulating it, I mean, you would obviously have to read the sign to tell if it was a real estate sign or a yard sale sign. But we, and those things are, you know, kind of commonplace and normal in a community.
Sure.
I mean, probably everywhere you go, people put open house signs up. But it's not so common to see, like, businesses advertise, like, you see the Jazzercise or you see there's a particular painting company that likes to place their little corrugated cardboard plastic signs in the right-of-way. And under our current code, we don't have a sign code per se.
Sure.
But we do have a nuisance regulation that says you can't put signage out in our right-of-way. So, it does give our police and public works departments the right to yank those signs. How, do you have any idea how to work around the signage that really hasn't become a nuisance? You know, the people at place who put them out are responsible and pull them, like the real estate companies for their open houses.
Yeah, we need a sign code. We're just going to think of it, taking a step back, and the way other municipalities have handled that with respect to those temporary yard signs or political signs is to suggest that in the definitions of the temporary signs themselves is that if the, if what it's advertising has expired, you know, the garage sale's over, well, then we can, then they become obsolete and we can require those to be removed. So, if in the definitions itself, if it suggests that the event is over, it's now obsolete, it's terminated, then we can require that those be taken down without suggesting that, you know, it's this qualifying event like the city of Gilbert did. So, there's ways around that. In terms of, you know, businesses advertising, again, it's time, place, manner. So, if they're advertising on their building, I mean, it's a different type of a sign. We may consider that a permanent sign and not a temporary sign. If it's a sandwich board in front of their location, that may not be considered a temporary sign. That can be an on-premises advertising sign. We can certainly regulate signage in our right-of-ways as long as it's applied equally, not, "You can do it, but you can't do it." You know?
But I think that's where the conundrum is, is if you feel or if a public attorney feels it's okay to allow open house signs in the right-of-way, but not the advertisement of, you know, a store that's maybe around the corner or something.
Right. And well, and we can, we can still qualify that if it's a directional sign and it's going to be located here. I mean, again, we can regulate the time, place, manner. But if it's going to be, you know, we're just, we're careful as to regulating the content if we're, so, and we could do that with definitions. I mean, you could be almost exhaustive with all the different types of, you know, types of signs and where they're going to be permitted and how big they're going to be. Really, it looked as though the court really got into the, it's these temporary signs that are just kind of, "Well, we can fix this definition, this definition, because it's temporary and we're going to regulate what it is." Political versus this event type thing. So, we, and other people have done it, so it's not going to be too difficult.
So, can you use the type of material in a definition?
Yep. Yes. Yep.
I mean, like, an A-frame sign would be a perfect example of a type of sign.
Yeah, well, and two, is it an on-premises sign? Is it private property? Is it public property? Is there business advertising on their premises? We don't have any issues with that. We're going to regulate how big it is so it's not distracting and the material types. And I think in the material types, too, you can get into whether or not it's permanent or not. I mean, if it's a pole sign, well, that's going to be more permanent.
Yeah.
Versus a temporary sign. If it's a sandwich board, but it's on premises, advertising the, you know, I mean, there's ways around it. So, it really tended to get into these temporary, political, because we have to look at the message to determine what category we're going to put it into. And that's where, if you look behind that, if we have to read the message and then we're regulating it based on the content, we're going to be in trouble. But if we're regulating time, place, manner across the board, it really, we don't care what it says, but if this is the material, if this is the location, we can regulate that and how big it is. If it's public property versus private property.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like in the time, place, manner portion of it, we already have the draft of going A-frame, A-frame type signs. For businesses, okay, all day long, but for like the real estate agencies, they have to take them down an hour after. It almost sounds like that that's not really allowed.
Well, again, that goes to, you know, if we're looking at sandwich board signs out in front of a business, it's not really temporary. They're advertising. It's an on-premises sign, advertising directions, whatnot. And we can, we can talk about that. But versus this open house, it's not, it's not going to be there indefinitely. There's going to be an expiration date when the event or the, you know, just like political signs or garage sales, when the event is over, we can then require their event to be removed. It's temporary, so it's going to be based on the definition.
You're going to have to correct me, John, if I'm wrong, though, but in our, in our plan for downtown, the width of the actual sidewalks, the idea was to get that A-frame out to the edge of the street so that the blind people don't go tripping over them. That was in some of our conversation, and therefore, that's technically on city property. It's more than their property.
Right. That is, so, College Avenue, the sidewalk, which is city right-of-way.
Sure.
Right.
But we regulate the material. So, we suggest that that material has to be this, in this, set at this far or not on, you know, right-of-way or whatever. So, we can regulate material.
Okay.
We could say in front of your business, but not basically anywhere else. Like, you can't put it two blocks down.
Right.
That kind of thing we could do.
Yeah, because we do have that in our, in our, that has to be within the parameters of the building. But that's not, and I'll tell you, the reason I'm asking is because I am a realtor. So, I use those signs a lot for doing open houses. And it kind of struck me as saying that, okay, right now, we're saying that within an hour after the, after the open houses or the, the open house showing is done, you have to have those signs off the street. And it sounds like you're saying that's illegal, that they can't force us into that, into that hour frame.
Well, no, it just, that's difficult to regulate in and of itself. When did the event get over with? That's just a nightmare for code enforcement. You know, that...
Well, it's on the sign. It says, it'll tell you what time, what time frame it's...
Maybe, maybe an hour is a little unreasonable for, I mean, we can, we can decide, certainly, but you can regulate that material. That material's going to qualify or be within the temporary type signage based on the material. It's not going to be a pole, you know, sign or electronic sign. So, we can suggest that, okay, we're going to define a sandwich board as X, Y, Z, and this is going to be the time and manner which we're going to require regulation.
Okay. So, in that case, it is okay to go by content, then?
It's not content. You're regulating the material. The material of the sign.
Okay.
We could, for instance, say that the sign could only be put up for four hours. So, then the real estate agent decides what time he puts it on, and it's four hours later.
Yeah, I mean, our regulation could control that, you know, if it's going to be for an event, that you have to have the date and the time for that, and then we require that it be removed. But why are we requiring it to be removed an hour later? I mean, wouldn't it be more prudent to make sure it's removed before dark? So, nobody trips on it. I mean, if the safety concern is the nexus, let's, let's tie it to something, not, not just this arbitrary, "Well, it's got to be removed an hour after the event," you know, because then we're also looking at political issues. Then the political signs have to be removed an hour after the event, an hour after the election. So, we just want to tailor it specifically to the type of sign, materials, manner, place, not, not what's physically written on the sign. If you have to read the sign and then we're going to classify it, we've got problems. So...
And we don't have to allow real, or campaign signs in the right-of-way, correct? We could, can we restrict that?
No.
We can?
No. That would be content-based. We would be suggesting that...
All right.
That, that political signs are not appropriate. And there weren't, we, the government, are taking a position on that and prohibiting the First Amendment right to free speech. So, yeah, that's the problem. We want to treat, you know, political signs, think about them, or real estate signs, if they're both temporary signs, I mean, we're regulating the material, the time, place, manner, not what it says. So, we have to be thinking about, you know, if we're going to say, what do we ultimately want? Is it the public safety that we're concerned about for these real estate signs because of, you know, where they're located? Let's regulate where they're located, not with regards to what they say.
So, if I'm campaigning for an office and I want to put my sign in the right-of-way of College Place, I would theoretically, if we said, "Yeah, I'd have an A-frame sign," I would have to have an A-frame sign.
Correct. If we're saying, "Okay, if you want to put it in the public right-of-way, this is the kind of material that you can use." We don't care what it says, but this is the kind of material you can use, this is how long it can be out, et cetera. So, yeah, we have to be mindful of that.
So, we could have a business that wants to periodically put signs out, and if they're willing to spend money on a certain type of sign...
Yeah, then they would just go to the code and be able to find, "Okay, this is the kind of advertising I want. Maybe I want it to be more permanent. What materials do I have to use and where could it be located?" I mean, we can, we can regulate the heck out of it, but, but we just have to be sure it's just really well-defined and it, we're not regulating the content.
Yeah.
Of course, people are going to want to advertise, so we need to be mindful of where, how big, you know, if it's on, if it's on their property, that type of thing.
Technically, if I, let's say, an insurance agent and my office is right here, I can go down to 12th and Larch and put a sign for that day that says, "Randall Braden's Insurance", as long as I remove it before it's dark. Because, can't read, it's no different than a real estate sign. So, then, I mean, the conundrum is, every business could decide to do that, right? So, we end up with all this, in a sense, off-premise signs advertising whatever business.
So, you know, it sounds reasonable, but like, he's correct with that.
Well, that's what we would be regulating, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, how big it can be, the materials...
That'll be a can of worms that we didn't, we didn't expect Arlen to get into.
Yeah. No, you're right.
Which is why we need a sign code.
Or if you had a...
You could do that now.
Yard sale sign that was in, on the lawn on the house, by the house, in the lawn of the house, can you just tell them to take it down when you're done? Is that, then you, then you go by the time, time moving on?
Yeah. I mean, we're kind of talking in a vacuum until we have, you know, a code where we can look at it, and then we would, we would then bring up those hypotheticals and see where it would fit within the code. You know, I can't say, we would look then to the code, to the definitions, to see if you could do that, how big it could be. You know, it's not just, "No, since there is no code, I can just go put up whatever, erect whatever I want." In certain cases, you're going to do a permit. In certain cases, it's going to be permanent. It all kind of depends on, once we get the code in place, and then, and then suggesting those types of things. Because we could say, "Well, what kind of materials are you going to use?" Okay, well, then you're subject to this restriction. So, we would go from there.
One of the things this commission really wanted to do is keep it from getting cluttered.
Right.
We wanted less is more and not have, because we were asked by one of the city councils to make this really egregious and just have this 40-page document, and that's not what we really were looking for. We're looking for, you know, people to feel comfortable putting signs out, but it almost sounds like you're telling us we don't get to do that.
Depends on what we ultimately pass in terms of the ordinance. Cities have, have been able, through their police powers, to regulate this. Their, their only restriction is, is that you don't violate free speech. So, we can regulate it, yeah, whatever the, whatever the citizens want within, you know, within good reason, what the government also wants, and, and pass the code. But we want to be mindful of aesthetics. We want to be mindful of public safety. We don't want to have, you know, a whole bunch of huge distracting signs.
Right.
But if you look at other, other cities and towns and you see, first aside from Tri-Cities, and Pasco has a very restrictive code, you can't have any off-premises signs, directional or otherwise, just no, for aesthetics. They didn't want their city to be full of advertisers. But then, you know, Richland and Kennewick are right next door, and they don't have those types of restrictions. So, you see more billboards, and it's not to suggest that, that it's less safe over there, it's actually better for the economy. So, so there's arguments both ways. How much do you want to have is kind of something that the city, whatever the commissioners and the cities willing to tolerate. But something is better than nothing so that people have some sense of, you know, what the, what the limits are. And there's a lot of options out there. So, you know, and I, I didn't get a chance to check out our draft and kind of compare and say, "Well, you know, this is where we're headed and this is where our problems are going to be." We do have some restrictions on the, on the political campaign signs, and so we'll have to probably take a look at that and add some additional language so we don't encourage or violate free speech, as it, as it's been newly announced since there was some sense of debate prior to '15.
If we're driving along Myra, Myra Road, College Place side, Myra Road, and it says, "Vote for Joel Schmidt," and that's all it says, is "Vote for," or "Joel Schmidt for Congress." We don't say, he doesn't say "When," kind of, how do we, how do we approach that?
Right. Again, it's, it's going, first of all, you know, how then those signs are, the materials that they're going to use, how we define temporary. Again, I've seen proposed language where if, if the event to which the sign advertises or is the purpose for which the sign was erected has expired, then, then, then there's going to be a removal. So, if we're not regulating politics, it can be a yard sale, it can be an open house, you know, but we have a general restriction as to when that sign needs to be removed. And we can have language that speaks to that.
Well, and all your votes are voted on a certain date anyway, so...
Right. So, that's an easy one.
We actually know what the target date is.
Correct.
I'm kind of looking at this maybe then as that, yeah, almost need to have a permanent business signage regulation and a temporary business signage regulation.
Exactly. And there would be. The sign code would speak to all signs, all advertising, temporary, permanent.
Well, I'm meaning the actual, you know, let's say it's Andy's Market, okay? So, maybe they want to go put an A-frame sign down on the corner of 4th and College Place with an arrow supporting their thing. You know, obviously, they, they should have that right. If you can do it with a real estate agency. Or you can say, permanent businesses, Andy says a permanent business, and a house showing or, or a yard sale or something is a temporary business, then it would be a different set of daytime standards.
Right. But I don't, I don't think that it's...
Location standards.
It's not the business. It's not, if it's a temporary business or, you know, a taco truck that may be portable. We regulate the, the materials in the sign. So, you know, if you're looking to affix a sign to a window in a business, you know, that, that could potentially be a part, I mean, we, we have window signs. We have. The code could be exhaustive in terms of how it defines the signage.
Right. Well, that makes sense to me, but I can say, like, this gentleman just said, "I'm sorry, I forgot to hand," Randall, he, he, you know, brought up a great point, you know, "What if the insurance company or something wants to put four or five signs around town, A-frame signs? They put them out in the morning, they pick them up in the afternoon? Do we really want that?"
Well, that would be a temporary sign because they'd be removing it. I mean, we're not talking to private property. We're talking, okay, on public property or within the right-of-way, if we're talking about a private, you know, a, a temporary sign that's going to be taken up and taken down, then we have restrictions on how big and where it's located, how many you can have. We could certainly regulate how many are put out.
So, okay. The issue of clutter, you know, because the very, you know, at the extreme, if every business in town decides that they want to go Larch and 12th, very busy intersection, and put a sign, then we'll connect that with 20 or 30 or 40 signs in that corner.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's kind of the extreme, and that's the kind of thing that, you know, how do you regulate that?
Well, businesses will take advantage. If they, if they find a little, a little crack in the, in the regulation, they will take advantage.
But we don't have anything currently, right? And so, people can do whatever they want at this point without...
Well, no, I mean, under our current municipal code, we, we do not allow any temporary signage in our right-of-way, any signage in our right-of-way.
Okay. Okay.
We have, we have not enforced that in all cases.
And then private property can, they can do what they want. So, so, our code would suggest that, you know, per square footage, if you have, you So, our code would suggest that, you know, per square footage, if you have, you know, frontage, per square footage, we could dictate how large any sign could be, and so, one sign per, depending on how large your lot is, that that's what you get. So, we're not going to have that problem of, you can just go out there and put up 50 signs. It would be, you know, you're going to be limited, and so that's the whole purpose of the code, is to make sure it's fairly applied to everybody and that it's limited, so we don't have clutter.
I think their focus, their point is on the temporary signs and...
And that would apply to the same, in a right-of-way, if it's a temporary sign, this is as big as it's going to get, and then, you know, per square foot, this is how many, you know, so...
Right, right.
You're not going to have that. That's the purpose of the code, to be able to prevent that.
Yeah, for instance, on College Avenue, the draft we've been working on says that each business can have an A-frame sign, and we define basically what an A-frame sign is.
One for every 100 feet of their fronted truck.
Well, on the bigger ones, yeah.
Right.
But when you're talking about a real estate agency that is, you know, doing an open house or something in a residential area, and they're trying to, you know, draw the attention off the main road, that's different than, you know, they may have, it may be an A-frame sign, the sign may need that definition, but I think to Randall's point is, well, what if I'm the, you know, the insurance agent that has a fixed location on College Avenue, but I also want to comply with their definition of what a temporary sign is and put a bunch of signs out at various places in College Place to direct me to, might direct people to the physical location and...
Yeah, but see, and like in real estate, there'll be times, I'll put four or five signs out, because you want to hit all the arteries and get everybody to come, to go into that one house, and if you get, if you do what you're kind of talking about, saying you get one or maybe two temporary signs, then that's really going to restrict real estate down a whole lot.
See, I don't know that it's per business you get one. It's going to meet the definition of a temporary sign, and you're going to be limited based on that definition. So, I don't know that we say, you individual only get to put up three signs based on your business or whatever. We're not regulating that, it's just time, place, manner. So, if you want a temporary sign, we're going to regulate the places you could do it, the manner in which you can do it, and the materials, and how long you get to do it. Without regard to you as a real estate agent, we're going to limit you, and you as a political entity, this is how much advertising, we can't see the content. We have to regulate everything as if it's a temporary sign, how do we want to handle that? And so, we'll be thinking through that process, through our definitions, to make sure that we don't have, we're not treating one business or one individual differently or politics differently. That's the key to this decision, is you can't say, political signs are going to be treated this way, this other message, you know, is going to be treated this way. So, we have to apply them the same. So, that would be the challenge for this new code.
So, you're going to look over what we think we might and tell us whether we can have it or not?
Yeah, well, there's, you know, there's certainly larger cities out there that have crossed this bridge, you know, so we take a look at their definitions and we consider whether or not that meets our standards, and we adopt similar language of those who have thought of the gamut of possibilities and pass something similar with proper disqualifying language too or disclaiming language, so that if something is struck, or what our intent is, of course, you know, we're not intending this code to be discriminatory in any way, blah, 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 and that it be applied fairly evenly to all persons, and see what it does. And again, we're seeing examples and examples of other cities, larger cities, that have, should there be an issue with those codes, that it'll get challenged before ours does most likely.
Right.
But I do see that we have, you know, we have some issues that kind of treat the content differently between yard sale signs and real estate signs and political signs. We can't have those distinctions, that's what the court said.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. So, that was a neat point. Any other questions?
Given our concerns for proliferation of signs like we've been talking about, do you have an example of another municipality that has established a sign code?
Yeah, and I wasn't, like I said, I wasn't able to pull up our link. I've got kind of our brochure that kind of talked about it, that makes me think that we've got some issues, but once I get that pulled up, I can take a look and compare what we have versus what other people are proposing, and then make some proposals to you and tell you what I kind of think our issues are at this point, to revise it before we ultimately pass it. And then, again, we can talk about examples or where is this going to fit in actually having a code to do some analysis in terms of how that would be interpreted and applied for us. I think that would be prudent as a, as a board to make sure that your issues are addressed and how that would kind of fall out in the code. We're talking about it in a vacuum because we don't have a code, and I don't have, you know, a draft in front of me to say, well, this is how that would, that would apply, be restricted X, Y, Z, so it's a little bit difficult to explain or get your mind around how this would shake out without having that language in front of us, but most certainly we'll get something in writing and then show you.
Do you know if there's some city in the state of Washington that has done that already?
Oh, yeah, a lot, a lot. We just haven't had a code yet, but yeah, there's a lot of municipalities that have already passed. But to be compliant, to think about all those things, we're looking at a large, very comprehensive code. Not that it's going to be complicated, but it's going to be comprehensive to come up with all these different variations of how people would want to prepare and propose signs that are also consistent with what the government's interests are, not having clutter or aesthetics, and promoting businesses and economy, but also more importantly, not discriminating free speech or content.
So, as Ken alluded to earlier, the goal of this commission wasn't to have a complete and comprehensive sign code. We are trying to keep it fairly simplistic. We know we need to address signs in an overall manner that we don't have now, but we didn't want to be so explicitly detailed to come up with a volumeless document to address every conceivable sign. So, am I hearing that in general, we are not going to be able to achieve that goal of us?
Yeah, it won't be simplistic, no. It can't be, because we can't regulate, because our concerns are, you know, these political campaign signs that can just run amok and it just, those are annoying. And as, you know, as elections come up, you're going to see more and more of those signs, and people not taking them down or not paying attention, and whose responsibility? And the city doesn't want to be responsible in paying people to go take them down, and we want the citizens to be responsible if you put them up to take them down, so we want to, you know, regulate that. We can't on its own. We have to apply it generally without regard to that message, so it's going to have to be more comprehensive. Is it going to be more complicated? Well, I hope not, but it protects the city, it accomplishes the government's goal in making sure we don't have clutter and that people handle, you know, their business, you know, with respect to removing the signs, the temporary signs are the issue, right? The code isn't going to be looked that much different in terms of our requirements for advertising on your building or erecting a pole sign or an electric sign, I mean, those are going to be the same. This Supreme Court decision only impacted these temporary signs, which I think are probably the most problematic or annoying signs that you guys are after, but we can't treat it simplistically because we can't call out political signs need to be taken down, yard sale signs need to be taken, we can't call them that. So, we have to kind of take a step back and figure out, okay, well, we're only going to regulate the manner, time, and place, so we're looking at the materials, and we have to kind of just take several steps back and be more voluminous and define them better. But I think the end result's going to be, we're going to be better able to regulate it, it'll be easier for the code enforcement officer to suggest that this applies to everybody. I'm not signaling out your political sign, I'm not signaling out your advertisement for your church meeting, this is just the way it is for everybody, and it's not...
More simple, have that uniformed...
It won't be discriminatory, so I think that'll be a plus, but yes, it's going to be a little more voluminous.
And the definitions is what I agree with?
Yeah, but the point is not to make it go over people's heads. I mean, obviously, we write the code to try to apply or be understandable, understood by laypeople, so that they get it, and I think if you break it down, yes, it may be longer, but it's smaller chunks, you know? We're going to define this, that's pretty simple. You know, for instance, in some of these, and again, I think the definitions start getting really long, but the more definitions you have, at least for a lawyer, we like definitions because then we can go back and say, okay, well, is this defined as this? So, now we know where to go here, A, B, C. You know, so when we're talking about, you know, an accessory sign or an aerial sign, an aerial sign means a free-floating balloon, kite, or similar object not directly secured to property within the city. That may not apply to everybody, but at least we know that's what we're talking about. And I think we'll do the same thing with all the different materials, so you'll be able to say, this is what it is, and then we go to this is the temporary sign, and this is the material, and now we know how it's going to be regulated. So, you won't have to sift through the entire code, we're not talking about how it's going to be comprehensive and get more convoluted. We'll still try to keep it simple and basic, but you should know where to go, it's just going to be longer as we get more detailed, but also being simple, if that makes, I'm trying. You know, I mean, because we have to go backwards to like, you know, if there's a canopy or an awning, that kind of sign. And you think about all these various different types of signs, I think we're kind of talking about a sandwich sign or a yard sale sign or a real estate sign. I mean, there can be an A-frame sign, a sandwich sign, an abandoned sign, you know, messages in the sky signs, all sorts of different signs. So, we're going to define them, so everybody knows, okay, this is the sign that we're fitting it into, it's temporary based on the materials, and this is where we're going to go and how it gets regulated. So, hopefully, it'll be easier, but more comprehensive, which isn't necessarily complicated.
Is it, would it be an option to prohibit temporary signs within the right-of-way as it is now under our nuisance code?
We can, yeah, we can regulate place, so...
That makes it simple.
It does.
No signs in the right-of-way. That also applies to us, you know, that means the city can't use temporary signs in the right-of-way as well.
Would that be a big imposition? Would you just put them behind the sidewalk?
But the only other way you could do, like in my cases, you would have to actually contact the homeowner and ask if you could put them in their yard.
For off-site sign locations.
Right.
But then, well, you might contact different homeowners. I'm a little concerned about this because I'm trying to sell my home. So, an open house, my home is kind of off the beaten track, so an open house sign required three different sites, and if that is eliminated...
That's going to make it very difficult to...
Why, I don't know why it would have to be eliminated. You have a temporary sign, maybe you're not limited in terms of how many, it's just the size. In the right-of-way.
You have to give permission for the private property.
Then you have private property people to deal with, which may have...
That's not fun. Then don't limit it to the, don't limit the right-of-way, but suggest that the size of the sign will be limited, and how long you get to leave it out is limited.
Can you have a...
We don't have to eliminate it completely.
Can you have a directional sign that says, "To the yard sale" or "To the house sale."
Well, that's what the open house signs are.
They have arrows on them anyway, so they technically are.
Arrows and arrows.
Or garage sale. Again, it's just, is that, when that event is over, whatever the event is, when it's over, you have...
The conundrum is if you, if you open it up, if everybody wants to be able to easily have open houses when their house is on the market, then you are opening it up for every other business outlet that may want to use the right-of-way.
Is that correct?
Make their sign comply with what is classified as temporary by material type, and that's kind of the decision that, you know, you have to weigh and the council ultimately have to weigh, is that what we want for our community? We want it free-for-all, basically? Potentially.
Yeah.
Because I do know that there are businesses that I have dealt with, not in the last couple of years, but there is one particular business that is a painting company with the word "college" in their name. Every year was calling to find out, you know, where they could put signs, because they, it seemed to, the business was changing hands every couple of years or something, and that's part of their marketing, is signage, and then, and I said, you can't do it anywhere. If you have a customer and you're painting their house and they want to put, they want to allow you to put that sign on your property, go ahead, we don't regulate that, but within our right-of-way, you cannot put those signs, they're temporary signs, and we don't allow them in the right-of-way. And finally, he went away, you don't see his signs as often, but you see more in Wal-Wal, I don't think they have the same regulation that we do, but...
Yeah, and again, you know, we can think outside of the box and regulate those in terms of the time, maybe, I know, before, you can have it there, any temporary sign, but it must be removed before dark. Then it puts the burden back on the person to remove the sign, and you can put it back, but maybe then, maybe then it doesn't encourage them to leave it.
There are other things that we can do too, like we can say, you have to leave a five-foot of pedestrian passageway or, because a lot of our sidewalks are only five feet wide, so if you're going to put a sign on that, you may not have the AAA route to get around that. You know, in some areas, we do have planting strips, and it, you know, it's not going to be a safety issue, but, so if you put some other conditions on how you put that sign out, that can eliminate some problems at some of the intersections, but it does put burdens on some of the other industries that, you know, are going to utilize that right-of-way for temporary signage.
Got a question. What's your opinion on our current code enforcement, current code not allowing any temporary signs, but selectively enforcing that to allow yard sale signs and allow real estate signs? Does that allow them?
I, you know, we want...
Selective in code.
I know, I suspect the answer is no.
He's telling you it's not.
We want to apply, we want to apply...
And I do not do that.
Otherwise, we're going to, we're going to have some issues with that, so having a, having a very comprehensive sign code will help the public and code enforcement to know what their boundaries are and what we can and can't do to apply it more fairly. To the extent we're missing it a few times, it could just be because of interpretation. You know, I'm sure you've come across something where you're like, gosh, I don't know how that would be interpreted, we're going to take this interpretation, and maybe the public or somebody took another interpretation, and, you know, where do we go with that? So, the clearer we are in our code, it's going to be better for code enforcement and for the public as well.
And for the record, I live in Wal-Wal, and I'm not often here on weekends when most open houses are out, so I would not be in a position to regulate that, unless I was going to Walmart or Home Depot, stay on the highways.
And we're trying, you know, our nuisance code has been developing here recently, and we've changed some of the penalties and are going through a learning curve, I would say, in terms of when we're ready to up the ante to the next level on the nuisance code, making sure, again, it's applied fairly and evenly, and I've had to work with some of the officers in terms of the forms that we're using to make sure they comply with the code. There's no point in sending out notices that aren't compliant, compliance, in compliance, so only to have, you know, members of our, of our city suggest that they, you know, they weren't given a proper notice, that would be embarrassing. So, we're working through those kinks to have a few go through, and then you've got that practical problem of they just don't have any money, and then, you know, we're fighting these people who don't have any money to clean up their property, and then the city's going to pay for it anyway, and they complain that, you know, it's not being applied fairly and evenly, and there's other people with places that aren't getting any attention, and so...
And what, what does money have to do with cleaning up your place?
If you, if you have a trashy place and you're not cleaning it up after so many warnings or notices of violation, the city will come in and clean it for you, remove the junk, and then charge it back to the homeowner who is on SSI. So, but, you know, it's not ideal, yeah, and then, or you've got, they just don't have a large income, and so they can't afford to get this junk off their property, and we're fighting them. You know, it's kind of, you know, where we put people who can't pay child support, who don't have jobs, in jail doesn't really solve our problem. You know, they're not going to pay, so it's kind of, not abusive, but it's just not, it's not, it doesn't do anything to charge somebody who has no money $500 for maintaining a nuisance because they can't, they're just not, they can't do anything to change it.
A little bit off track, I guess, but to that issue, we're checking, no, it's consistent, but necessarily, but the city should have, I don't know, a list or a practice, maybe, that refers some of these cases to some local organizations like churches that might decide that, hey, is this elderly person or this person that can't afford to do this, if that's the city, go on, do it and charge $100, maybe it's a volunteer who will go and do it.
But the city's going to have problems talking to churches to get, to effectuate their outcome.
Volunteer organizations, that you can sign up as a volunteer organization to take care of this, and so the organizations come to sign up, and then the city can say, hey, there's this situation, anybody out there want to take care of?
The scouts, the scouts need community projects. They need to know about these situations. There ought to be a list or something that we have here at the city hall that they can come to and say, we need a community project.
Yeah, and our code has changed somewhat to allow kind of an interactive process after we kind of cite these people that are carrying on nuisances and suggest, we're going to fine you, or, you know, one thing you could do is contest, or you could also start negotiating with the city to enter into an agreement in terms of a timeline and how, what the plan is, how we're going to clean it up. And so, then the homeowner could contact some of these... And so then, the homeowner could contact some of these agencies, or those agencies can contact the city. As a city attorney, I have some issues with the city contacting religious organizations to ask for help to, again, effectuate its outcome, because the city has an interest in, in getting these places cleaned up. I don't, I don't know how the city could advertise if, if there's anybody out there that wants to help, you know, some of these people. I just, yeah, I don't know how the city could, could force a landowner.
I attempted to do it once with, with Sunbridge, because I, you know, have some connections with, with some people up there. And I asked the property owner if they were willing, and they, they were. They, they actually met with Sunbridge, and Sunbridge organized a group. And when it came down to Sunbridge entering the property, the owner decided that it was not in her interest. She didn't like the arrangement, and it all fell through. So, I mean, you know...
There's, yeah, there's only so much power, I think, or authority that the city can do, and I'm hesitant to wield our power to force somebody to do something. If they want to do it on their own, or the organization contacts the homeowners and works it out, and the city's kind of out of it, great.
Yeah, I didn't have any hand in it.
But it's, it's kind of a predicament. I mean, you have some, some landowners here that are, that are having issues and residents that are complaining, and we're doing what we can to try to...
We are working on code enforcement, and it's gone back to the police department, and they're making strides in, in, one of it's just educating the police department, the officers, that, you know, this is part of their job duties, you know. We don't have a designated code enforcement officer like the city of Wal-Wal and the counties have, but, you know, we may move towards that. It's kind of a moving target right now.
Yeah, there could be more of a public outreach, perhaps, that the, you know, maybe the neighbors, if they're so up in arms about their, you know, their neighbor having a mess, they can contact those people and see what we can do to try to apply pressure that's outside of the city.
What about putting a lien against their property for the cleanup?
Yeah, that's one way. Again, it's oppressive a little bit. You know, you have somebody who doesn't make much money, who's on a limited fixed income, poverty level, and now we're leaning their property, the one thing that they had. Now they're homeless, and that, we just created a new problem.
They have property.
And what do you do with the property? Until you sell it, you don't have funds.
When they die, we collect a lien.
And what do you do with it?
Well, it does come down to resources for the city, too. I mean, we've got a lot of pop holes to fill, so to speak. And so, you know, it...
And literally.
Let's bring it back to our sign code.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
What is your thought on the process for making these revisions? Are we going to let Andrew share, share with you what we have, and she's gonna review that and make suggestions? Or are you gonna make the first attempt?
Yeah, no, I, I do want to, I haven't had a chance to sit down and make some revisions. Like, we talked, like, I think you had, Randall, you sent me a link...
Great stuff, actually.
To proportional signage based on how much furniture you have along the road. So, I want to try and at least put an option in the code for you guys to consider and have that for Andrew to consider before she does it.
Very good.
But, yeah, I would like to get that off to her, and then I, I've been kind of directed by the mayor and the city minister to go ahead and slow this down, because we do want to make sure that it's gonna stand up in court. And there are a lot of different municipalities in the state of Washington and, you know, regionally, that have made changes, that have attempted to address this court decision. None of them have been challenged or tried, so, you know, it's all, you know, it's their city attorney's opinion of whether or not they're meeting so the letter of the law. And so, we'll want to make, we're gonna take our time, or there's no pressing, you know, reason to get this out there and do it wrong. We want to do it right. So, it could be a while before we bring it back. But I would imagine we'll have Andrew take a crack at it, and we may, depending on how drastic the changes are, we may have her back to talk some more about, you know, what she's proposing and why. And we'll, we'll just see, we'll see how complicated it gets. Anything to add to that, Andrew?
No, I, yeah, I would agree. Take a look at it, do some revisions, and then perhaps give it, give it back to you guys if you have questions, and I'll be back to do some explaining. We can do that, too. But, yeah, I don't suspect that, I know a lot of people are trying. It's not, it's not blood, letter, law. One, one, one of the concurring opinions tried to set out, "Okay, here's what we're talking about," but it still leaves some to interpretation. We think we get the intent, and so as municipalities are passing those and trying to comply, I don't suspect anything's gonna find its way back up to the Supreme Court and say, "Aha, that was it." So, it's not gonna be that, that clear cut. In part because it takes, just to get up to the Supreme Court, it takes kind of those wonderful facts. I mean, it took, it has to be a pastor advertising for a church that he didn't have a building in to get enough public support to go up. It was not likely to be a, you know, "Yard sale" sign or something like that. It, it had to be focused on some hot button issues such as religion to show that it was content, content-based. And again, you know, the courts were split in terms of how they interpreted that, and the district court and the court of appeals both found that that was just fine, and took the Supreme Court saying, "That was crazy. That is not the analysis. You're not looking at the government's justification. First, you're gonna look at the, the face of the law and determine if that is, if that's content-based." And we, we find that it was, and criticized the court of appeals and the district court, you know, very, very intelligent judges that, that missed it. So, that, that's the Supreme Court. So, so, yeah, we'll take, we'll take a look at it, particularly the, the issues that it, that it really focused on, and make sure we spend a lot of attention and time there. I think most of what you've already prepared and drafted that you've discussed is probably gonna be just fine, but there's those few instances on the temporary signs that, that were probably awry of the content-based restriction that, that just came down, so...
And then would we expect to get that in an email before we meet again, so we can review and become prepared to discuss? What's your thinking?
Yeah, well, certainly email. Yeah, I can send it out, whatever draft would come up.
Yeah, I could do a red line or, or something that kind of highlights the changes that I had suggested, or, yeah, we could talk about that in front, too.
So, John, what I'm hearing, though, is that it might not be for next meeting. It could be two or three meetings from now, but we're...
It probably won't be for next meeting.
Sounds like our comprehensive plan should take precedent, anyway. We got a lot of work to do on that.
Yes.
All right. You want to give us an update on the comprehensive plan? Are we ready to move on with signage for the...
Yeah, I think we are, unless you guys want to keep talking about it, which I don't.
I see. Most of my colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
I have a, the draft capital facility plan last year in the past. It's pretty comprehensive. It covers pretty much every aspect of, these are big-ticket items, basically. It's what you put in the capital facility plan. We will be going through a capital facility plan update. In general, you include these lists of projects and capital purchases. One reason why you do it is if you don't have an item, like a road construction project or in, in a list, then it's, it can make it ineligible for grants if you haven't included in a capital facility list. There's also gonna be a capital facility, there'll be a safer court that goes along with this and explains in greater detail what's going on throughout the city government. And that's not ready to be released yet. Mike Rizatello, our city administrator, is the one that's been the driving force on this list. So, we likely will hold a vote hearing on this. If you have ideas that you think, you know, "Hey, let's put this in here," then, you know, by all means, mention it. The intent is not for you to go through this and scrutinize and say, "Well, I don't think that the police chief who's in the car," sort of thing. These are, these, this list has been developed through department heads and staff and the city administrators, so it's, it's kind of, it's just a plan. It doesn't mean we're gonna go out and spend $3 million on the new, on the police station. That, that is in the list. But it doesn't mean the money's there for that.
But it does not include personnel.
It does not include, no, it does not include personnel.
It is a, it is a...
Yeah.
Well, if it's not our intent, if it's not your intent for us to scrutinize it, then what are we gonna do?
Well...
But you know, but your taxes are running away.
It's an opportunity for the public to be aware of the capital facility needs that are out there when you go through the public hearing process. And that's the, that's the primary reason why you bring these things forward, to have them in lists of public conceiving. So, I mean, you know, you look at, they end there. If we were to waiver magic warrants and do all of these things, what is it, like 40? 45, 92, or...
61 total.
6129?
Very last page.
61, no.
61, 930. Well, I, I only ask because I spent 25 years in the auto industry. So, I know buying and selling vehicles, and I know buying and selling equipment and stuff like that, and some of these numbers are low, very low in today's economy, and some are very high. One, very specifically, one, and I have to pull this sheet back up again, is a skid steer that they said is gonna be $100,000, and that's more than twice the one cost. You can buy a brand-new, very nice skid steer for $35,000, so... So, I said, I, I wonder what, you know, right there. I don't even know pages on, almost compared to the last, second to the very last.
That's a backhoe.
Yeah, $200,000 for a backhoe. Yeah, and I just wonder, you know, where do they arbitrarily cover these numbers? Aren't they just covering their butt, so to speak, so...
I would imagine that some of these numbers came from, in their estimates, you know, when we go out to make a purchase like that, we'd have to go out to data and...
Yeah, because, you know, things like, and I often wonder, I also wonder, too, like, there's things like dump trucks in there and things like that, that, those, those pieces of equipment's last 25, 30 years. First off, do you really need them? Second off, why are you not just gonna buy one that's seven, eight years old and still has 20 good years of life left on it and be half the cost?
So, in essence, this is a wish list. Basically, they're gonna have to justify all of those expenses.
It's aggressive, yes, for six years.
Yeah.
And it is always nice, but having been on the council for years, you have to do the street every six years, so that you get the street. And this, they've taken the idea of the capital facilities, and just, okay, these sort of things are received, you like, it's available. And that's, you know, all you can do, find the money, do something with it. And I noticed that they do, chip sales are about $70,000 a year. But they do maintain that, give you a lot of work, you see. But even $70,000 or $50,000, something, it's not quite the table. Can you like that, you, in place, that, that do it six years? Unless you give these taxes, you do all the, sort of, these costs.
How, how is this, is this list going to be used? Is it just a list, or is it a possibility I wish to do? Or is it intended to provide some direction and focus?
It's my understanding that the council uses these capital facility lists and their budget to determine how money is spent, where, when, and, you know, to have an idea of where the money's spent in future years, sort of thing. Like Mr. Duncan said, it's a, it's a wish list, essentially, but, you know, it's, is it realistic? Are we gonna, do, do we have that money? I mean, I'm not the budget person. I don't know what our budget is every year. I doubt we could get all of this accomplished in six years.
From my experience, some of what does this do is that it's kind of a wish list, but it's a sort of prioritized wish list. And by council approving it, then staff, if there's grants that become available, many times one of the requirements is a grant, is that it is in the city's capital plan, or that it is consistent with the city's, you know, plan, comp plan. And so, it's there, then you can go apply for the funds, and maybe something comes of it, you know, maybe there's...
Eligible if it's not inherently, if it's what you're adding, some kind of makes sense.
Someone to securely comprehensive, even though it's not fully achievable.
I guess, you know, and, and for staff, let's say that something here, that they say, "Well, you know, maybe in three years out," but for whatever reason, next year, there's some special grant for kids' steers, you know? And so, it's like, "Hey, we can go apply for funds here," and so, you know, maybe they can get it.
Years, it was a street, six-year street fund. You have to have, in that street, the streets that you wanted to repair. If it wasn't in the list, there was no possibility of, 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 um, state transportation.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can take a look at, under the parks, under public works, you know, Lion's Pond Restoration. I mean, we, I have no idea what it's gonna cost to dredge a pond and, you know, restore the bank and, you know, put some sidewalks in and whatnot. You know, we threw a number at it, and, you know, until you get into the nuts and bolts of the project and have an engineer involved, and they can start giving some estimates for it, you just don't know. I mean, I would, if, you know, five years ago, if somebody would've told me, "We would be spending five and a quarter plus thousands of dollars on a pickleball courts and a bathroom," I would've told you, "You're nuts. There's no way. That's what it costs." So, I mean, so, you know, I can't speak to how much a skid steer costs. I mean, I'm sure there's all sorts of options that, you know, change the price of those things at size. I will, I mean, our public works crew and their defenses, they don't go out and, if they can, if they can buy used equipment, they will. It just depends, you know, the, we thought we were gonna be able to pick up a, a used backhoe a few years ago after the recession hit, and, you know, everybody drove by the yards over there in Tri-Cities off the highway and saw, you know, front-end loaders and everything, you know? And those companies were not cutting deals. It was not, so, you know, use doesn't always mean you're gonna make good progress.
I did also notice that some of the timeframes are a little bit, well, I thought was unusual, like the corner, or intersection of Larch and 12th, and I remember on the first meeting that I would sat in here with, it said, "That was pretty much a lot of people in this, this commission, thought that was a major priority, and this one says it's not even gonna be talked about until 2020." So, I'm thinking, "Wait a minute. We need two, two more stop signs. That intersection is a whole lot better than it is now. Why are we waiting three more years before we even talk about it?"
There's a lot of, a lot of it's a dance, like Randall mentioned, you know, there're dates that we put out there. I mean, you can take that particular intersection, we're actually, we have, we're gonna be doing studies on that intersection, the Larch and, and, Larch and Spitzemberg intersection, the Larch and Meyer intersection.
Yeah.
And C Street and Meyer intersection. Kind of looking at how all of those work together and... And kind of looking at how all of those work together and coming up with a solution, whether it's a four-way stop or a traffic signal or a... Anytime you make decisions on changes with your road infrastructure, whether it's speed limits or striding, you need to do some level of, about traffic study evaluation, making your decisions.
Well, if I were to head up a fundraising project for a corner of 12th and Larch, that's such a nuisance, I'd love to see people get together and do something about that specific intersection. I think, nor that.
Roundabout.
Oh, no, I hate roundabouts. I can't believe anybody uses roundabouts. Yeah, half the people don't even know how to use them.
That's true.
Popular, really. I was in the one down there on the end of Meyer the other day and I was waiting to get into it and the lady comes around the corner and stops and waits for me to get in. So...
Help me out, Kevin.
Apparently. So no roundabouts. Lights that tell you what to do, that's what people understand. Go this way, go that way, go straight, stay. They understand that.
So...
Did you share what you wanted to share?
I shared what I wanted to share.
Just, I have a curiosity and you might not have the answer, but I see that there's fire trucks and police cars and a bunch of different things that are saying that they get funded by the street fund. And so just kind of wondered what that nexus is with the street fund or maybe it's a misnomer of that fund, because it seems to be funding a bunch of stuff that doesn't have to do with streets.
I don't have any background on that, sorry.
That's pretty good fund, by the way. I noticed that too. That street fund's really funding an awful lot of stuff.
It's something to do with... Now, we can bring Mike in and if you, if you guys want, you can talk more about this. I mean, I would anticipate that we would have him there if we were to hold a public hearing on any of this stuff and, you know, so...
You wouldn't be looking for any action from the planning commission on that capital facility, is my question.
From what I understand, Mike wants, there is a process where planning commissions hold hearings on the capital facility plan and then the final adoption would be by the city council.
If that is the case, then yeah, it'd be appropriate for us to have more information on what you're able to provide.
Yes, I agree.
Mike thinks specifically there, answers a lot.
Why would the planning commission...
Well, there is...
That's a council.
There is a...
It's financial.
Adopting it, yes, but like with the, you're a recommending body, so capital facility lists are part of the comprehensive plan, so that is one avenue that you can take is include that, these lists in your comprehensive plan. So as part of that process, you hold hearings.
I don't think adopted by reference.
You can adopt by reference, I believe.
Good. That's more than... Right, any other business? Make a bribe, Mike. Okay. Hi, adjourned meeting. Thank you.